Secure the locations, all sixteen locations. We have secured, we will let you go with the customer assistance. We have only one issue, and that is that Pepperoni, when I went on to meet with him, he is finding on sale the business. If the business, Pepperoni's, puts on one eighty-one on the right-hand side, if the business, if he still owns the building, he will of course let us use it. If he doesn't own the business, of course he won't be able to let us use it or hold the person. I feel like that whoever bought it, we probably let him do something, they already had another single agreement. I don't really see a problem.
Do we have a secondary location?
The only other thing that I thought of, and since he's here, I could ask him, if it came down to it in Danaalson, could we combine it with another precinct that is close to it and have a separate table? The nearest location to there would be the, like the Achilles Church, that's on one eighty-one, and the people need to have a separate table, and then they can, they show there, and that's not that far to travel, and we would of course have to be closer at that location to make sure.
Would we have, again, contact Secretary of State?
That could consolidate his. So the way the election code is written is that each, they have a box in every scene, so if it comes down to it, we have to have, we have to provide for the separate table.
And to drop it, you have to, you also have to, you know, have to vote for it.
Yes.
But I just hope this will go in, with it in place, and if emergency, then we'll contact Secretary of State.
No, we can, maybe contact that person right there.
Was this item twelve or thirteen? Is this item twelve or thirteen? I have voted just to approve the order, I think we let.
I don't put it in, put the order. He put it with the order.
When, yes, the order here has all of the attachments. Only, that's what we work with him on, to make sure that we secure the locations and that we have the justice in place.
But across the street from Pepperoni, McBride owns a building there also.
Okay, and nothing precinct.
That precinct one.
They're both precinct one.
Huh?
They're both precinct one.
Yeah, they're both precinct one, and.
They have their boxes, voting boxes.
We're gonna combine the boxes together, right?
Well, no, but I had wanted to do it, I didn't want to combine the box, I was just gonna move the box to the same location as another one, to give those people the right to be, you know, have the same service that any other box would have, they'd just be at the same location.
So you need to either, if that didn't work, move further north, or drop back down and combine, is that correct?
Would your recommendation be to go ahead and vote it in as it is, and then deal with it if it's not available?
If Eva thinks that they would allow it, I don't see a reason not to go and vote.
I, I can't think we would work with this, just this one. That exists, no better than.
Thanks, Jessica. Other than that, that's the order.
Motion on item eleven, which is why I said, we're gonna go with all the things.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank y'all. Thank you, sir. That's the least you've ever had to say.
Aren't you, aren't you lucky?
No comment.
That's one for, you know, for, oh, the, what is it?
It's a, it's a correction, there was an error on the budget, and I thought it was a nine hundred dollar error.
Is it this? Oh.
Jason, would you please tell me, just a quick thing? Our, what we just passed, we can get that to you.
Judge, the attorney over here thinks that we should do thirteen, that's what it relates to.
Okay. Item thirteen, U.S. Martinez County clerk, A, rescind, UI eight, two thousand thirteen, rescind the items seven, A, and B, to approve consolidation of polling sites for November amended election, and selection of election judges and assistants. I'm gonna go ahead and read two, item B, if anybody wants to separate, they can. I'll, 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 I'll,[504.81]
Commissioner Wiley, Commissioner File, all in favor?
Aye.
Item G, small entity budget and tax rates. One under that would be adopted budget for small entities. Item two would set tax rate for small entities. And follows it. Country acres, road district, from point one-five-five-zero to point one-five-three-five per hundred dollar valuation. El Robicue, road district, from point one-four-four-five to point one-three-eight-one per hundred dollar value. Wood Valley, acres, road district, from point one-six-zero-one to point, uh, let's see, had to go up considerably here. Point one-five-eight-two per hundred value. Oak Hill Development Road District, from point one-two-two-six to point one-two-eight-zero for one hundred dollar value. Motion on one and two under G. Commissioner Wiley, Commissioner File, all in favor?
Aye.
Item six, well, we're not even going to have six yet. We'll pass item six. Item seven, public hearing courthouse annex, one, two, three, update, comments, and questions. Anyone in courthouse annexes has comments or questions? Just because it is a public forum and important to the county, and like some sane comments been made before, these projects are very important to the well-being of the county, and we appreciate all the support for them that's out there. So, check into all of the ins and outs of it, and satisfy yourselves as to the needs and the opportunity that we have to do it in the most economical way that will probably be available to the county.
We are planning, at least you mentioned it, the last court, that we are planning to put together a presentation so that we can formally take it to the people. Aside from saving our old historic courthouse, um, district court is a real issue. Judge Jackson is in the back, and he's told me some horror stories about some of the places that he's had to hold his court because the JP Court is now occupied quite often by district court, and that's something that we really need to care about.
Well, many people felt recognized, not only, we have two district courts that serve this area, they serve five other counties also. But along with that is a family court, a visiting judge, it sits, an old family court, which is always a, pretty much a fiasco whenever they're all in the halls and here. Crawford County Court and JP Court.
Two of the visiting judges.
Everyone?
There's two visiting judges, you heard of them, and CPS.
Right. Well, I mean, uh, the court space is ended, and it's very needed, and with the growth of the Eagle Ford that's bringing more cases into the courts and everything, it's, uh, it, it does need to be addressed. No more comments?
We don't, we don't get a package to do, do you have any idea?
Well, we need to hold a meeting, Don's been doing some work on the computer to put something together. We need to hold a meeting and brainstorm kind of, uh, the different things that, uh, well, what we've kind of talked about, and it's just for presentation in the meeting, is to, uh, on the front of a page, put the pictures of the library and the criminal justice facility in the old courthouse, list the uses that will be utilized under, you know, such as the criminal justice facility, be the district courtroom, the district clerk, the adult probation, and the DA's office will be housed in that building. And, uh, of course, the courthouse will be the county operation again, but it's either be moving to the old library building and the, uh, on the historical side, it would take the old, uh, probation department as our archives, which we now did in the newspaper on that. It's a really a change against things that, uh, are, uh, one dependent on the other, and it, it, it just sets our county up for decades to come to, to meet the, the growth that's coming. And, uh, like I said, I, I feel that we've been fortunate, uh, when the courthouse was condemned, that we had this school available to us, we were able to purchase the school, we're able now to, to move on at lower interest rates being at an all-time low, hopefully they'll remain our collateral election. So, uh, at any rate, uh...
Judge, I'm just gonna say it, it's, and not that anyone here is disputing it, it's really important that we get our story together in a format so that what it is that we see is clearly communicated to the community, because there are all sorts of rumors going around. The latest I heard was that our plan is to demolish all of this, is what we're gonna do. This whole school area and build a new facility right here, and that is economically, that's something we could consider. It wouldn't make any sense, first of all, but we couldn't even consider it. So, we really need to get our word out so that the rumor mill can disappear.
Other comments, Paulson? Not a little bit. Item eight, uh, he man represents Don Wallace and Diane Hartman. Brent Weaver, IPAS advisor, participated in his area. Response and clarification, Judge Kennedy, and IPAS advisor agreement for benefits. The defendant's request to open the process and selection of this new insurance group. Who wants to go first?
I guess, I'll go first.
Okay.
My name's Brian Wilson, I guess, I first have to say, uh, for nominated, uh, consultant, the last time I got here. Uh, we are assuming the process is currently, uh, setting up the nonprofit trust to save the county over twenty thousand dollars in premium, by eliminating the premium taxes, your current thing, as well as, uh, putting measures in place that actually eliminate the conditions involved of your current, uh, structure for your medical, dental, vision, so forth. Um, I guess at this point, just tally, like to combat those, or say something here?
Am I having questions, Tommy? Well, one of the reasons we went ahead and put this back on the agenda, uh, after you spoke the other day, stated that Hartman and Wallace was getting seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, provisions, uh, in the tax thing. Uh, Mr. Wallace came back on public comment and disputed that the accuracy of those, and, uh, so that's, we want to make sure everything's back. One other thing, too, when that was voted on, there was no mention of the, uh, uh, commission for the remainder of this year, and I sent a single letter stating that, that, that was not voted on in court.
No, it was.
Yeah, it's, uh, and so we'll go from there.
Okay.
Judge, uh, may I make a statement? When this all came up the last time, um, it was noted in the paper that I was a descending vote, and, and I would have been, but we didn't ask for a descending vote. But just to be perfectly clear, I'm not opposed to making a change if a change is in order. I was opposed to making a change and not knowing what the details of the change were, what it was that you were bringing to the table versus what it is that we've had on the table before. So I just wanted to make that clear to everyone, that I'm not gonna vote for or against something that I don't understand. And I would have voted against it because I did not think we should go forward because there was not enough information where we were really clear of what it is that you were willing to do for us.
Okay.
I haven't, hadn't seen a presentation and do not know, and still do not know.
Uh, I brought some presentations, would you, would you pass them on if that's okay?
Let's, uh, let's finish the process here. Uh, I think the, one of the requests is to open up the process. We have an insurance board, and I'd like to see everybody, uh, go before that board with all the information and, uh, uh, with the complete board intact, you know, I mean, it's, uh, it's been fragmented, uh, and, uh, the board was put together so that people can study the different issues and so forth and so on, and actually be, be informed and, uh, so we can make an informed decision as to what we're gonna do. Thank you. About once.
Gentlemen, we've been your agents for twenty-something years, and, uh, we've been able to reduce your premiums, uh, some years, and in some years we haven't. And I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail. You know, Diane's a taxpayer, she has employees that are taxpayers in this county. But, uh, I'm just gonna make a suggestion to you, and I, I wish you would consider this thoroughly. And my suggestion would be for you to rescind the agent of record letter and put us back as your agents. Put together a RFP, request for proposals for insurance, uh, request for proposal for consultant, and for, uh, a attorney, to put together the trust for you. I think those are three things, uh, that you could go out for proposals for. The, the reason, the reason you go out for proposals is to get the best deal for the county. You know, if, uh, this gentleman's gonna, uh, charge you fifty thousand dollars for consultant, and Jason's gonna charge you forty, and we charge you thirty, you don't know that at this point. You don't know what your options are. You don't know what everybody is gonna do for you. So if you go out and you get a proposal for consulting and, uh, insurance and for the, uh, trust, and you take all that back to the committee and let them make the decision, and, uh, you, you wanna save money. Well, to save money, you put competition on the table and see what competition brings in to save you money. So it makes sense to me for you to go back to a RFP and see what everybody will charge you for consulting services or for, uh, insurance or whatever. But I've offered to, Mr. Wiley, to give him some copies of some RFPs, so he all could, uh, put your insurance committee together, take these RFPs, and put your own RFP together and go out for proposals. Now, at this point, uh, you wanna save money, so to do it is go out with the RFPs, see which, who comes back with the best cost and the best benefits for you. That's the only way you're gonna know who's gonna give you the best deal, who's gonna save you the most money. And that's the idea, to save you money. And I'll let Diane talk now, but that's, that's all I say, is just reconsider, uh, and I think I've sent you a letter that shows how to rescind the previous agent of record letter and put us back as agents till you get your RFP put together and your bids in, see how much money you can save. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, Judge, um, I reiterate everything that Don has said. He said it very well, I agree with him one hundred percent. I believe that the commissioners might please reconsider, uh, the agent of record change, uh, let it go through the normal process like we always have, and let all of us have a fair shot at keeping your business up. Uh, so I would ask that y'all would entertain rescinding the letter and letting it go this year through the regular bid process, and just let the best person that brings the best, uh, coverage and benefits to the county be the one that also...
Judge. As the, the chairman of our insurance committee, um, we were put together to, initially to do what we could to solicit additional bids, that's why we were set up. And we had one agent that came to us last year under the pretense of coming in and talking about supplemental insurance, who came in and wanted to tell us how that we could change to make them their agent. And I cut them off because that's not what we were challenged to do. I'm not gonna say that we have not had some conversation within our committee about the cost of our insurance, because we have had conversations about the cost of our insurance, and quite frankly, that's why we set that up to see if we could get additional bids, because our insurance seems fairly expensive. But we never had a meeting within the committee where we had an opportunity to review IPS, which I know is a very reputable company, and might well be exactly where it is that we need to go. And I, I don't know how we go about rescinding the vote, or whether there's even interest to rescind it, but I really think that for the benefit of the county, that we need to look at exactly what these folks bring to us, what these folks bring to us, what Tally or whoever else it is would bring to us, and review them, and come back and make an informed recommendation to the court. And I just, that's how I think it should be done. This gentleman right here may well be who we need to be with, because I do know from conversations that I've had with Commissioner File, that they've done some good things. But I don't wanna hear it, I wanna see it.
Okay. Now, item nine on the agenda is basic tally, tally, and a big insurance group. And, uh, A, under added discussion on recent agent record change by IPS advisors. Item B is consideration in action and request proposal for fee-based consulting and service agreement with agents, brokers, consultants to be presented to the insurance committee all, for all employee benefits. The insurance committee will make the agent of record recommendation to the commissioner's court. And item C is consideration in action to rescind the agent of record change by IPS advisors. Which is basically the same as the, uh, end of number eight. So, be- before we go into that, uh, here from Jake Tally, would that be appropriate?
Yeah. Well, I wanna thank you all for letting me, uh, come this morning, and Commissioner Wiley, I would agree wholeheartedly with your comments there. I did prepare some formal remarks, because I do wanna be sure that I addressed some items that I have concerns about. I don't think I need an introduction in the community, but I am a president of the county benefits insurance group, of course, we're a local firm, it's located only three blocks away from this building here. Okay? The employee staff is six, our firm has operated in Wilson County for eighteen years and not been a taxpayer all those years in this community, and we have extensive experience in the political market. I come before you today because of concerns I have about the process and your handling of the selection of the new insurance advisor and the process of executing a contract with those advisors. Some might say that I'm here only because I don't have your business, but I would, uh, say that I'm here because I'm a local professional, and I wasn't even given the opportunity to compete for your business. Uh, after reading the article in the Wilson County News, I called up Commissioner File about questions that I had about statements made in the meeting as it relates to the premium tax exemption. I explained to Commissioner File that the exemption can be made, but the county must establish a single nonprofit trust and a trust account to allow premiums to flow in and out of, and that it wasn't as simple as the new agent calling the insurance company to get the premium tax removed, as stated previously, Commissioner File, conversations he had had. After talking with Commissioner File, I began to think of more questions because it didn't seem apparent that anyone really knew exactly how the process worked. Then I began to call other leadership in the county, and I asked them questions about the same agenda item, and then it also became more apparent that there were others that were also shocked about how the process was handled. So here are my concerns. And as I started looking into this, there's other concerns that came out of this, not just simply the agent change, and it was the process. Uh, so the first concern is that a new advisor has been picked by the county without taking prudent measures to evaluate competitive proposals from agents, brokers, consultants. Therefore, you really can't determine if you're getting a good deal, because you have no other consulting agreement proposals to compare it to. What you wanna know if you're getting a fair deal, thank Commissioner Wiley, you just expressed that. Okay, you have nothing to compare it to. The second concern I had is that, did any of you have the contract to read before you approved it? Mr. Wiley has indicated, uh, that the contract was not available for approval. So I would ask Mr. Gompis, did you have the contract to read?
I read it.
Before you voted?
No.
Morales, Mr. Morales, I'm sure that was the same case. So, it's not common practice to vote on any contract without approving or reading the contract first. And, uh, I think that that process is flawed. Were you also aware, in addition to the fifty thousand dollar agreement, that the, um, we broker record would receive commissions? And that would be a no, because Mr. Wiley has indicated that, or somebody has indicated that, uh, this morning. And of course, oddly enough, that reminded me of a quote that's been in the media ever since, on March ninth, two thousand and ten, addressing the National Association of Insurers. Nancy Pelosi said, "We must pass the bill before we can understand the tenant." This is simply what has happened here. The third concern is that the agenda item I thought was too vague. Um, action was taken at the meeting, and an agent of record change was approved for IPS advisors. In addition to that action, the contract was signed with IPS advisors with compensation tolling more than fifty thousand dollars, yet there was no wording in the agenda item indicating anything about contract for services. An agent of record change only literally needs a letterhead, a letter from you, indicating to the company that you're changing agent of record. But what we did with this agenda item is approved, a contract and appointed an agent of record, but in the, uh, item itself, it made it, it was very vague. So, with the additional compensation, you know, you have a fifty thousand dollar threshold in bidding requirements. Fortunately, in the insurance world, you don't have to have what's called competitive sealed bids, you can do requests for proposals. The local government code allows you more flexibility when you get requests for proposals. You can literally negotiate with each of the offerers, contrary to what's been done in the past. You did a sealed bid, which actually hampers your ability many times to get the best deal. You need to be able to negotiate with all the offerers when you get the deals on the table, and the local government code allows you to do that. Now, what's in question here is that it stated fifty thousand in fees, but in addition to that, we're going to have September, October, November, December in commissions as well, which gives you a contract more than fifty thousand dollars, and it specifically states in the local government code, and I have it here, if you'd like me to read it, that if you execute a contract over fifty thousand dollars, you must go out for a credit, uh, competitive proposals. Then here's the last concern. Is the signature, what is the signature authority of the county? I noticed that Commissioner File signed the agreement, I do have a copy of the agreement here, after Judge Winnie chose not to sign it. Does the commissioner's court have to authorize an agent to make a contract on behalf of the county? The first paragraph in the local government code states that, uh, very thing, appointment of agent to make contracts. The commissioner's court of a county may appoint an agent to make a contract on behalf of the county. My experience serving on public entities has been that usually the board, if, if there was not going to be a signature by the one that normally consigned contracts with the county, that the commissioner's court would probably have to approve that that person signed that contract either in the absence or the denial of that, uh, signature. I don't know that that was handled. So, then the other thing I want to mention is the, one of the last pages in the local government code, and I think this is, uh, very interesting and should be known. It's under section two sixty-two point zero-three-six, under item B. It says, "The county may retain a broker of record selected under this section only on a fee basis by the county. A broker of record retained in this manner may not directly or indirectly receive any other remuneration, compensation, or other form of payment from any other source for the placement of insurance business under the broker of record contract." So you entered into a broker of record contract, therefore, based on the code, to me, it's invalid. Because what has happened is you've approved compensation and commissions in there, and so therefore, if you're really choosing a broker of record by contract, no commission should be there at all. Okay? So, in conclusion, I do believe it's probably time for a change. I, I thought that for some time. But I also believe that you should request proposals from interested parties, and allow those proposals to be presented on a level playing field. You know, in all my eighteen years in business, I've never obtained cases sides without presenting a proposal first. It's never been done. Uh, contrary to what you might have been told, it's not common practice for the new agency to start receiving commissions prior to your January one anniversary date. It is common to compete for the business and not get paid for several months, even after you're awarded the business. That happens in our business all the time. You can have the best agent in Texas promising reduction in premiums, but the reality is that claims experience plays a huge role in your ability to reduce rates and even obtain quotes. Many of the local companies we serve utilize us because we are local, and we literally meet on-site each month with, uh, to educate employees about their benefit offerings. And in addition, our office is downtown for anyone to stop in and visit when they need help. Benefit, benefit communication is key to illustrating to your employees the true value of benefits, and it's, it's even harder to do that from Houston or Austin, Texas. Okay? Uh, in light of all the public concerns that the public, um, has with government these days, we all know that, uh, federal government, state, county, and city governments are really scrutinized today because of actions taken. And in light of the recent request from the petition to have a bond election, I would suggest that you, uh, act on, uh, the remaining two items. And that's all I had, any questions for me?
How long you been with the insurance agents?
How long what?
You've been an agent for the jury.
How long have I been in the business, eighteen years?
Eighteen years. And what do, why does it take something like this for you to come forward? And explain to us that, we didn't even know that we had, uh, that we can change agents. In order to change agents, you have to go through a procedure, which I know.
Right.
And when you told me if I had read this, and I told you, no, but my county attorney had read it, 'cause sometimes we don't even get a proposal, and I've seen it on Friday that we get a proposal, and then Monday we want to approve, and I think that a proposal happened.
Well, I have bid, um, business here in the past, uh, we all, several of you have been here when I did in the past, but, uh, have never made any, uh, inroads to get the business, and you get to a point, well, we have not been able to obtain competitive quotes in the past many times at this point. And, you know, that's, that's been a big part of it, and, you know, I've spoken with people before about the county, but you get to a point where you try and try and try. I've had opportunities in years past, and I don't know if you were even serving at the time, where we were actually saving, uh, about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. We met with the insurance, uh, committee, and we presented some options, but then last minute, uh, basically, the insurance company that we had competitive proposals out there was called by an existing agent indicating there was a cancer claim, therefore, the proposal was withdrawn. And, um, so we've been down in the past before, we love to entertain the opportunity to do this, but I just wanted to point out some things that you should be, um, looking at in the current agreement.
Tim is inaccurate?
What's that?
You read the proposal before the vote?
I did not read the proposal before the vote, I read it after the vote. I didn't have any information prior to the vote, but that's entirely unusual.
Thank you.
And, uh, for, for discussion on this matter, is it proper to go into executive session? The, pursuant, uh, commissioner's court deserves to act and go into executive session pursuant to the section five-five-one point zero-seven-one through section, five-five-one point zero-seven-six, the statute of government code. We ask that the auditors of county attorney and county clerk remain in court.